Our May 3rd commission meeting. This is our first one in about a year in person, and I'm glad to not be staring at the computer. This, I haven't looked forward to the last 10 meetings, and I've kind of looked forward to this one a little bit. But anyway, welcome everybody. I've got my phone on airplane mode, so please turn your ringer off. I don't know how to turn my ringer off, so I'm using airplane mode right now. The first item on the agenda is the minutes from the March 1st, 2021 meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made to those minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, there is a minor revision. On the Mayfield subdivision case, it lists David Deal as surveyor with Dewberry. It should read SC Civil.
Okay.
Just a minor change.
Would that change?
Would you change so much?
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the April 5th meetings, 2021. Like to see if there are any changes that need to be made on that. If not, I will accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented?
We've got a motion to approve as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. We've got a pretty big group here. What are y'all for the most part here for? Which item on the agenda?
The last one.
Last one. That's what I was thinking. If you're here for ZK 2109, excuse me, Baytown PUD. If you're here for the Baytown PUD, please raise your hand. All right. Are the developers here for the Baytown PUD? Y'all represented? Do you mind, since I know that we're not meeting with the COVID restrictions anymore, but since we have so many people here just to lower the time of the chances, do y'all mind if I move that to the first of the agenda, just to kind of lower the numbers out and save a lot of time for everybody? All right. In that case, is that okay with you, staff? I'm sorry I surprised that on you. Just because of the numbers here, so we won't be breathing each other's air quite as much, we're going to move ZC 2108 Baytown PUD to the first item on the agenda.
Okay. You'll have to bear with me getting through.
Sorry about the last minute on that.
My screen is not moving. Oh, on the top, far left button.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a conditional annexation PED, which is plan unit development for 162 lot town home development. It is CZ 21.08, known as Baytown PED. This is 16.56 acres. The applicant is seeking to, a development with 162 townhomes for a property density of 9.78 units per acre. The property is currently located outside the Fairhope corporate limits and within the unzoned, the Fairhope PTJ. The subject property is surrounded by a mix of zoned and unzoned property, including R2, churches, single-family residential, both R1 and unzoned, and R2 and R4 to the east. Auburn Extension lies just to the north of the property. As you can see here, our zoning map is on the left, an aerial of the property on the right, currently used as a single-family home. The proposed site plan is on the screen now that shows each of the townhome units would be an individual lot. So those are organized around a central private drive, 40-foot wide private drive, with two entrances, one on Dyer and one on Bishop. And this is the southwest corner of Dyer Road and Bishop Road. The land use would provide 4.67 total acres of green space, which is 28% of the development which exceeds the requirement. Pedestrian circulation is shown in red with sidewalks on Dyer Road and Bishop Road within the private, adjacent to the edges of the private drive, and also around the lake and internally through the open space. The landscape plan as proposed is on the screen at this time. I'm going to move on through this one. Some of the staff comments. We do have within our zoning ordinance, R3TH, which is guidelines for townhomes. And there's a comparison at the top right, lot area, where we require 2,400 square feet. This is 1,400, where we require 24-foot wide lot, if you will. And there, of course, there's zero lot line. The proposal is 20 foot. Front setbacks are the same at 20 foot. The rear setback is required in our R3TH is 35 foot. They're proposing a rear setback of zero feet. Maximum lot coverage, where we recommend 45%, they're proposing 70%. So just some of the differences there. We also require our rear-loaded parking and rear yards provided for each lot. The density as proposed, as I said before, is 9.78. We have a standard method for what we've heard many times in explanations on the density analysis. I won't get into that, but the appropriate number we came up with was 5.2 units per This is a PED, so there are architectural plans provided. The townhome section of our zoning ordinance requires anything above four units have some undulations in the facade of the building, so it's not a flat wall. They have met that requirement on the front. The rear is, as you can see in the elevation details, does not provide those details. So when we're looking at, you know, while the street might have that facade, we're looking at the open space, you know, that's a pretty drab, you know, I'm subjective there. It's my opinion, but it is a PED. It's a pretty drab outlook. When, think the interior green space is 50-something units, and all of those look the same with a 5-by-12 patio with no screening or anything to connect to the green space. You know, that comes into play on the property lines. There's the patio, and then within 20 feet, sometimes less, as currently shown, is property lines without fencing provided or anything to screen those. So, you know, from here to the wall, there's the neighbor's property when he came up, come out. We don't have graphics within our zoning ordinance, but I did find one online, and I think this kind of represents what we were looking for with R3TH and what a PED would allow with some of those tightening up the, you know, maybe it's, each rear yard is not 400 square feet. You can see some of these shown, you know, it's kind of where the purple trees are, if you will. That's the rear yards. Those are connected with trails, walkways, connecting to the green space. So each unit does have a private drive. You know, 162 units, and nobody can grow tomatoes or some little garden. That's kind of a, you know, I understand the walking out into the shared green space, but with people living here, the thought that we have, I think, guidelines that we do have in R3TH, we have clear directions and clear guidance on what we're looking for. So with that said, staff has recommended denial of the PED as proposed. I just want to remind everyone that this is a requested zoning change, and as such, this is a planning commission recommendation to the city council, who will have the final authority. One note that goes for, I'm sorry, for one thing we did, we usually handle at the front end, it does not apply to this case, but Chairman, before I forget, we do not have, we have over 30 days, so any preliminary plats or things like that, we cannot table.
Thank you very much, Hunter. Any questions for staff at this time? All right. Thank you, Hunter. I would like to re-say what Hunter just said, just for the audience. This is a zoning. A zoning is actually an ordinance. So our, we will simply make a recommendation. Jimmy Conyers, our city councilman, is the only person whose vote is going to matter. The rest of us will simply make a recommendation to the city council, and we'll ultimately decide whether or not to make this zoning change. If this is a change, then the developer, you know, will come back later with the subdivision. If you notice, on the agenda today, we have a subdivision request for a PUD that we approved about two months ago. And so we won't get into today any kind of drainage, water runoff, or anything like that. This is basically a conceptual view. Won't get into traffic ingress egress or drainage, because that would then come back later under a subdivision. This is more, you know, how does this look from 30,000 feet? And this would become a zoning, just like a property being zoned residential or commercial or industrial. So that's kind of our purview today. So what will happen is I'll let the developer come up and make a presentation here in a moment, and then I'll open the public hearing. And any questions that you have, I'll write the questions down, and we'll get the developer or the city, whoever's the appropriate person to answer, whatever questions you have, to answer those questions. And then I'll turn the meeting over to the commissioners, who will then at that time vote to make a recommendation. So at that time, would somebody like to make a presentation on behalf of the developer? Thank you.
Good evening. David Deal with SC Civil. The reason that we decided to go with a planned unit development is this is really not a traditional townhome development. It's a specific product that sells very well. So using that product, we were trying to come up with a site plan that was in the spirit of the PUD regulations, which is innovative and good use of open space. Having personally rented a townhome here in Fairhope for a little over a year, I have some personal experience that I tried to apply here. Number one, I did not like people walking behind my townhome, with their dogs especially, and also didn't like the townhomes butting right up to each other. In the example that was on the screen a minute ago, if you noticed, a lot of those townhomes, you come out the back door, you're looking at the side of another townhome or something like that. So we tried to have all the perimeter ones, you know, backing up with nothing behind them in the interior. That's where we tried to put a lot of the open space. So you walk out the back door, you're not 25, 30 feet from another townhome. In keeping with that thinking, instead of putting personal rear yards behind each thing that people would fence off and, you know, with a variety of different things back there, we're limiting that so that the open space remains open space. There is a nice five-foot sidewalk through there in that area, so that it can be used as a common area and walking dogs and such. And we do have a dog park down in the southeast corner. Some of the other comments that we got from staff, for example, buffering. We do have trees planted every 30 feet around the perimeter. On the south end of the property and on the west end of the property, there's already existing trees and vegetation, so we're adding to that with trees every 30 feet. I talked to the developer for the meeting. There are some areas along the west side where the existing house is on Dyer, and there's another area on the east side. And he's agreed that we can add some understory trees between those to improve that buffer. There are a mixture of uses in the area. There's some lower-density single-family, obviously the Auburn Extension property. But there are a number of multifamily uses in the area, some of them as high as 20 units per acre. So I understand the staff's calculation for the density analysis. I did provide another density analysis. It wasn't meant to supersede what they did. Obviously, that's their standard analysis. But it was more to compare this development with comparable developments in the area. Like I said, there's the Arbor Gates, Palladian, Manic, Grace Way. Those range from six units per acre to 20 units per acre with an average of about 11 units per acre. So we're not inserting a foreign use in this area. Directly east of us, in the Meadowbrook Development, those, you wouldn't notice it probably by looking at the aerial, but those are fourplexes that were built a while ago. So like I said, we're not inserting a foreign use into the area. We do feel like we did a good job with the green space. We have a huge lake that'll be along Dyer Road with a sidewalk around it and nice landscaping so that as you drive down Dyer, you're not looking at the back of a bunch of townhomes. You're looking at a nice lake. Along the south end, like I said, there's existing vegetation backing up to some unzoned properties there that, a lot of them are already currently, at least on the, on the street south of us on Gafer, they are being used for business. But we will have a buffer there. I think that's about it. We do feel like we meet the spirit of the planned unit development with our open space, and we tried not to just line up a bunch of townhomes and back them up to each other. We tried to have everything backing up to open space. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. I was using my calculator on the density calculation. What was it you just said about some of the units being business?
Some of the uses south of us?
Yes. Oh, some of the southeasts.
Yeah, yeah. There's attorneys' offices and stuff like that. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. All right. Any questions for the developer this time?
Well, I have a question. Just when you, you were saying that this is a product that has been successful. What defines, what are the characteristics? I mean, I see this whole development, but what are the characteristics of the product that has been successful? What do you mean? Just elaborate on that a little bit.
Well, there's a, there's a large need, desire in the market for this type of residence, people who want a nice space to live in with a, within a community where the HOA takes care of basically all the yards.
So just like townhomes with common properties, what you mean?
Right. Right. And I noticed, when I lived in those townhomes, the main thing people liked to do was walk. Everybody walked constantly all the time. So we have sidewalks and trails throughout.
Who is the target demographic or demographics for this?
It's not really targeted. It could be any age. I mean, what they found in a lot of them, it is older people, but it's not specifically targeted for that.
I mean, the reason I ask is, you know, my, you know, main concern about it, and I just want to ask you right now so you can, you know, defend it. My main concern is, you know, where are the cars going to go? Are they going to be parked all over the sidewalk and all over the streets? Because a lot of the subdivisions around here that we've approved with this kind of, you know, shape with the 12-foot, you know, width and, you know, one car garage, basically it's like the garage is used for storage, and then you've got one car in the parking lot, and one either double parking it across the sidewalk or out in the street. And that was just kind of a concern that I have. What have y'all contemplated for where people are going to put the cars on this?
Well, we did provide the parking spaces. The-
I mean, will two cars be able to park on this? I mean, if-
The two cars will be able to park if one's parked in the garage, yeah.
Then one will be behind it, or?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Just one other question. Just, I'm really struck with the difference between the front and the back facades. And I mean, I hear what you're saying about the open space, but I'm struggling with an open space that looks out at those back facades. And did-
Excuse me. Rebecca, would you pull your microphone down to you, please?
There you are. We got a question. Sorry. I'm struck by the difference between the front facade and the rear facade, and the lack of differentiation. And if you're in a, an open space bound by all of those blank rear facades, it does seem very stark, and like it takes away from the open space. But the question is just, did you ever, did they ever contemplate more differentiation, more detail on the back of the building? Because it seems like that, and maybe it's, you know, a covered porch or something, you know, would make a huge difference.
Right. Right. That's the plan that they provided. I mean, I can certainly pass that along.
Further question? Any further questions? All right. Thank you, David. All right. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If everybody could try, I know that y'all have one representative that wants to, you know, speak, but after that, if y'all could try to keep it to three minutes or less a person would be great. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and your address. And if you are a representative of a property owners association or something like that, you know, just please let us know that as well for our meeting.
I think, I think it's important for everybody to understand, if you've never been to one of these where there are a lot of people, and folks have got an attitude about what it is, they, they are in favor of or they are opposed to, that everyone, that's a great thing, one of the great things about America, we all have the ability to ask for whatever and to be heard. So this is, that's what this is about. So these people, they have brought this application to us, they have the right to be heard, so just understand that. And one day when you come, you'll have the same opportunity.
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Smith Prestwood. I live at 17 South Rolling Oaks Drive. I'm going to let Jason Roberts talk first, but we brought some photographs that I would like to hand to each of you, if that's okay.
Sure.
And everybody, we don't want to waste your time. We're going to try to keep everybody short, but if you will, maybe give Jason a couple extra minutes. He's kind of the big-picture guy for us, so.
Sure.
And I believe everybody has a copy of the petition. Is that correct, that we submitted? Okay.
I think he's big enough that he can get extra minutes.
Thank you, guys. My first time to speak in a setting like this, so thank you. I'm Jason Roberts. I live at 8610 Dyer Road, at the foot of Dyer Road. I grew up in Mobile, and in my mid-20s moved to God's country, is what I call Baldwin County. Very proud to be here, very, very proud to be a part of Fairhope. And as a lot of my neighbors who I've recently spent quite a bit of time with, we love our city and we love the growth, but we want to be good stewards with what we've been given. And we obviously have a petition, and it's because of concerns, not to necessarily stop any reasonable growth or to, to not develop or see things better, but to be good stewards of what we've all been given, and I know that's what you guys are charged with, is to do just that. I know, Chairman, I heard you speak of a lot of the drainage issues, traffic issues, things like that would come at a later time.
That's correct.
So do I need to spell any of these things out? They're in this petition, because that are our immediate concerns as a group and as a family here. As you see these photographs, I've taken, some of these are my property, some of these are my neighbors. We already have a lot of cut-through traffic coming from 98 or Greeno to Gafer Extension on Bishop. And there's already some impacts that we feel without any development, per se. Now, we're not against something that would be fair, but this might be a little higher impact. So how far would you like me to go in the details?
I can ask the developer, if they're prepared at the end. You know, obviously, they have, you know, they would not have any kind of a drainage plan at this point whatsoever, because things can change. They're just looking for the zoning right now.
Sure.
But they probably got a few ideas, and I could ask them, you know, if they voluntarily wanted to mention some of those. But the requirements, when they come back for subdivision, is that the rate of flow after the development's no greater than the rate of flow before the development for any 100-year rain or less.
Sure. And we all know plans are, you know, our best-laid plans sometimes are, they don't stand the test of time. And we've seen this in multiple cities and multiple counties all over. And what I would just suggest is that, you know, be mindful, these photographs are not during hurricanes.
Right.
These are not during a 15-year, I mean, 15 days of steady rain with water table very high. These can be in the summer. So we already have issues that we battle, and I know a lot of the neighbors have been to the city or the county for some support and some help, but we have, there's a lot of elderly people there that aren't even able to be here tonight. I've been asked to speak in, on their behalf as well, just for emergency services. So I would just, again, being a good steward of what we have and understanding the problem that we all have currently would be the most appreciated, most appreciated by you guys.
Sure. That's good. Go ahead.
And then as far as our traffic congestion, it's unbelievable already presently. And so, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of other things that the guys here might, would like to say, and you've already stated that, you know, these things are not really on the table to maybe, to battle at this moment. And again, as our petition states, we have all but two residents on these streets that are going to be affected, that signed in favor of, to be against of this particular zoning. Now, we're not against the zoning or annexation, rather. It's, it's the, the impact. We need a, you know, we would prefer something lower impact. We also, I have a neighbor that's, that shared with me, he's been there over 20 years, and the last photograph in that packet is, forgive me, I forget the name of the street, but it's the townhomes that were built on Stone Street or, I'm sorry, I can't recall at the moment.
Bishop.
It's on Bishop, but it's, there's some townhomes right off of Bishop, and they have a street name. When those were built, the impact that you're seeing began to start becoming more prevalent because it backs up to a property and everything's running off. And then I've been there six years at 8610 and noticed it just naturally, you know, becoming worse without any development. So again, I will, we would just like a hard consideration and look at the, any development and a lower impact would be fabulous.
Okay.
Is there any questions? Is there anything, anybody else would like to speak?
No. Yeah. Well, thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Well, please don't forget to mention your name and your address, please.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Rose Wiles, and I am an instructional coach at Fairhope East Elementary School on Bishop. I also live at 21307 Rolling Oaks Drive. I have a bachelor's in education, I have a master's in education, and I want to talk to you about development and its impact on our schools. Development is not the only reason for school overcrowding, but it is the most preventable. If school expansion and construction doesn't keep up with growing enrollment, student performance may decline along with the overall quality of the school experience. In 2010, sixth grade was moved from the middle school to Fairhope Intermediate to help alleviate numbers at Fairhope Middle School. We were very overcrowded. As we speak, BCBE is building a ninth-grade academy to alleviate overcrowding at Fairhope High School. In 2014, the total enrollment at Fairhope High School was 1,428 students. In 2019, the student population was 1,698. That's an increase of 270 students in five years. That's a nearly 20% increase. We already have 3K through 6 elementary schools in Fairhope. This particular development is zoned for Fairhope West, which is downtown. They were zoned on the idea that limited development would be happening in their catchment. Fairhope West is already sitting at seven classes per grade in kindergarten through third grade. It is not a small school. Development on this site could potentially add over 100 students to their enrollment. These are not retirement homes. They have bedrooms all upstairs. There are so many concerns. There are so many concerns I have regarding high density developments in Fairhope. The environmental impact, the pressures on our infrastructure, and the stress on our appeal as a premier southern town, as outlined in our comprehensive plan. They're my concerns, but I'm not an expert. However, when it comes to education, I have some expertise. If we continue with this level of unchecked growth, our excellent schools will begin to suffer and lower the overall appeal of Fairhope, which is something that none of us want to happen. If this 16 acres is developed, which I completely appreciate, can and potentially will happen, please consider a drastically lower density development. That will help limit the impact on our schools. Mrs. Carol Broughton and Mrs. Julie Pierce, the principals at both of the elementary schools, they would like me to expressly convey their thoughts that single-family residences at an R1 or an R2 level would really, really help control the influx of students in our schools. As Mr. Tyler had said before, we are really the victims of our own success. People move here for the schools, and I would just like our schools to stay great. Thank you, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiles. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
First, thank you to each one of you for what you do. So I know it's a difficult position to be in, so thank you for what you do. My name is BJ Arringman. I live at 21311 Rolling Oaks Drive. That is in the north Rolling Oaks subdivision.
My last name is Herman.
I'm sorry?
My last name is Herman.
Arringman. Yep. If you spell it, it's like E Ringman. So that's how I have to tell people. I know it's difficult.
E Ringman.
Yep, yep.
I don't remember that one.
Okay. I just want to make a few comments that are, in a little bit, that may add something to the conversation here. My background is in civil engineering. I actually work for the city of Daphne, employed by the city of Daphne, so I see a lot of these developments.
A thumbs up.
Yes, yes. But I love where I live. One of the things I bring to your attention is in looking, I appreciate staff and their commentary on this development. I agree in most part with most of the things that they've commented on. I'd like to go through just a couple quick. One of the comments that was made by staff is having to do with the density. I think this is the biggest portion for me. That's an issue because of the high density this is. And I might bring to you a little bit different perspective in the way that you just put a single use in a single place, but I think if you take the perspective of already having certain multifamily developments in one spot, it congests things. To continue to say, well, hey, these uses are already here, we'll just continue to put these here, well, that's not the only use that's there. And so what you have here, and it looks like from these numbers, if you look at the comparable developments which staff has pointed out, the right table is quite cherry picked, in my opinion, and I think that they're correct in saying that they agree with quite a lower density. So that's the first point that I wanted to kind of make. The second point has to do with parking. I can tell you, at least from experience in public works, that these kinds of developments, if you have two parking spaces for townhomes like these, you might as well go ahead and expect that there are cars lined up on those streets. And we take calls every day for people complaining that we don't service their garbage. Well, reasoning for that is because there's vehicles in front of the garbage cans. And so this, I think if you left the parking, at the very least, in this designed the way it is, you're going to have difficulties, public works wise. The third thing I just kind of wanted to mention has to do with safety and connectivity. I notice that their sidewalks kind of placed along the two roads, Bishop and Dyer, with the development, but I think would be naive to think that those folks who live in that development aren't going to venture out and walk in other places, but there's no connectivity in either one of the Rolling Oaks. And so they will be on the roadways. They will have to walk the roadways, and that's going to create a safety concern for me. And the other part I just wanted to mention quickly is, if you notice the layout of these townhomes, and I, you know, just kind of going off of what's in there, the living space is upstairs, so I don't know that you're necessarily going to be targeting anybody who's retired or not going to make it upstairs to live, so. Those are the things I wanted to add to you. Again, thank you for doing what you do.
All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
Don't worry, most of it's already been said. I'll get paid for choosing.
My name is Brent Wiles. I live at 21307 Rolling Oaks Drive in Fairhope, which is also in the north Rolling Oaks subdivision. I guess the first thing I want to say is, I want to make sure everybody knows, nobody's answering the phone. The phone number on the sign for the zoning change request, the phone number on the website for this commission says to call 990-0214 for information. And I believe the lady that that number goes to is no longer employed with the city, and as best I can tell from the phone calls I left over a couple of weeks, nobody's answering or checking the voicemails, so hopefully we want to do something about that. I did get through eventually calling just the city and getting transferred. So heads up. And I had a question, so I won't repeat a lot of what we've already said. I obviously have concerns about if the property's developed and the drainage impact and the environmental impact, et cetera. I'm pleased to hear and support the recommendation that was made to deny the approval at this time. I'm not in favor of the plan that's submitted, have concerns regarding zoning the property as a PUD instead of an R1 or an R2. I was interested that the, when y'all did, when the city did its areas density analysis, they chose not to count the Auburn Extension property, indicating because it's such a unique property, and I do understand that. But that being said, it is a very unique property, and that its presence contributes to the area's aesthetic and is a point of attraction for many property owners. So it contributes to a rural aesthetic in an area you might not anticipate it, and the owners in the area would want to maintain that aesthetic. So I would wonder if we might could consider counting part of that property when we do that analysis. I also want to question the high density developments, and how are we making sure that we're in keeping with the comprehensive plan? So when I read through it, one of the expressly stated goals of the plan is, quote, "to ensure that Fairhope does not become a victim of its own success." And it specifically asks the question, "Will that growth continue to reinforce Fairhope's qualities or dilute them?" And then we know the vision statement is to be a premier small town in the south where growth enhances the vibrancy of the city while offering exceptional quality of life and preserving the Fairhope identity. So when I read the comprehensive plan, it indicates that in 2000, our population was 12,480 people. The US Census in 2020 indicated that we are now 23,901. So in just 20 years, we've essentially doubled our population, which seems like very rapid growth to me. And I'll wrap up quickly. My wife's already made some excellent points about concerns regarding our school system and the rapid development and the impact that has. A question, I think if we continue in the way we're going, we have to ask ourselves is, how many high schools do we want? Because, you know, we have 3K through six schools, that, you know, there's an endpoint that seems pretty obvious. And then how small a town are we if we have multiple high schools? And then finally, I just wanted to point out that another stated goal in the comprehensive plan is to ensure that all new development is reflective of the Fairhope physical image and appropriately connected for people, bikes, and cars. And for me, Fairhope's physical image is our quaint and busy downtown, our residential neighborhoods with primarily single-family homes of many shapes and sizes. It's not sprawling condo complexes or rows of identical houses packed in together. So I'm concerned that we're not in keeping with the physical image of Fairhope. So finally, I'm not opposed to growth. I recognize that the growth is what's kept our city vibrant. That's why there's all these tasty restaurants in our relatively small downtown. It's why we have a bustling downtown, and so many US cities only have a Walmart on the highway. So I recognize we need to grow, and that's what keeps us vibrant. We just want to make sure, and I also am not opposed to someone developing their property. I recognize it's their land, they can choose to develop it. It's also part of our community, and we want to make sure that development contributes instead of detracts. So I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate what y'all do, and my request is that if this property is zoned, it's zoned as R1 or R2. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mrs. Wiles. Anybody else?
Thank you for your time. I'm Ann Taylor Blower, and I live at 21312 Rolling Oaks Drive. My husband and I, Kent, have lived there for 33 years, this June, so we're not newcomers. But we've seen the water increase coming down the, I'll call it drainage area. The drainage area goes through north, I'll call it north Rolling Oaks, is dry unless we have rain. It is not a creek, it is not running water. This has increased exponentially over time as other developments have come along. Rolling Oaks Lane that services four families has had its bridge washed out twice. And two, you might think, well, south Rolling Oaks and Dyer extended, okay, so there are small little subdivision roads that get a little water over them, maybe two feet, a little water. But note that it also, this area also eventually floods County Road 13 at 104, after it goes over Auburn land. So we're kind of the beginning of Fly Creek in our area. So I just want to emphasize those points. Also, I know from traffic standpoint, and I know you're not here for water and traffic tonight, but from the traffic standpoint, you have done studies of the traffic on Dyer. I call it the Dyer Road bypass, because since the road is, Bishop has been opened up to the high school, the traffic has increased quite a bit. But if your traffic survey was done during the summer or during early, when Bishop had just been opened up, I would suggest maybe another traffic survey be done. Put it there during the school year, because more and more people are finding that bypass to avoid 98 and coming that way. So thank you for your time. I just want to emphasize those points. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? All right, take just one more, if that's all right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, if you'll state your name and your address, please.
I live at 29 South Rolling Oaks Drive, so I live on the, the other one from, I heard a lot of people talk about that live on the other side, but we are in the city, we are in the city limits of the city of Fairhope. We've lived there for about, I guess, about 10 years. It's been a little bit longer. My wife and I, my kids, raised my kids there. But a lot of what people have talked about, I'm not going to be repetitive, but it touches on a lot of things like the comprehensive plan, very important. Stay consistent with that. I just pulled this statute, it's just a general thing, and it's straight out. Straight out of the Alabama Code, thank you. But it just says, you know, the whole purpose of zoning regulations is to, as it says here, and I even highlighted a couple of it, you know, lessen congestion in the streets, you know, prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, meet other public requirements, which I think would include stormwater runoff, and, you know, conserving the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout such municipality. So I'm gonna tell you, I have sat in your seat. I served four years on the planning commission in Daphne, about 20, I think, actually more than 20 years ago. That ages me a little bit. I think I was 10 when I served there, so I'm about 30 now. So if I do my, but seriously, the, I've sat there and understand it, and I've sat here, sat there when people come in and complain about things, and I have not really been on this side of it, but I understand, we're really dependent on you guys. And we appreciate what y'all do. We appreciate what the staff has done to investigate this, do a very thorough job on that, and the recommendation of the staff. It is real personal to us, the people here that clap, are because we live there, and we like it there. We do understand that the property's going to get developed. We're not here saying, don't ever let them put anything there. But this is a little bit unreasonable. And I'm afraid that they are negotiating, they're saying 162 units, so next time they can come in and say, well, we only want 110, and, you know, as you would negotiate something like that. I hope that's not the case, but that is, that is a lot of units in that small, relatively small piece of property. I want to say one other thing, in case you didn't know this, it hadn't been talked about yet, south Rolling Oaks is, I'm sure somebody's told you, floods. When it rains a lot, the street floods, literally, and this is in Fairhope. To the point where when we have a lot of rain, some people park their cars, I didn't know this, but they park their cars on the, at the end of the street, on the other end, so they can get out of there. When they go to work, things like that. I found out the hard way when I couldn't get out of there, because the streets flooded, and people parked their cars at the other end. And this is right across the street, right, right next to this piece of property. So it is, it's pretty bad now. And in the traffic, you know, somebody mentioned traffic too, but I just appreciate what y'all doing, and we're just asking you to protect us in this situation, protect our investments respectfully, and we hope you will consider that very seriously. Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I had a lot of interesting, good comments, very well-prepared group. I will say one thing, you know, the assumption is always that the water will be worse after a development, and a lot of times if the water problems are upstream and you have a development downstream, they can actually improve the water issues. But again, that would come at another time. One thing to remember is that this land is not in the city limits, correct? So they did come with the PUD condition on annexation. You know, there are a certain number of rights that people have, especially out of the city limits, you know, so it's not that, like you said, development's coming and we just have to look and balance this out. But Larry, if you want to come up, we had a couple of items. I took notes. Raymond mentioned the parking, and also asking, you know, why a PUD? You know, there's nothing with mixed use or anything in this other than just density, so why a PUD rather than just one of the, you know, multi-occupancy projects? And then asked about, you know, the parking aspect, is, you know, what's going to happen when people have, you know, three cars, two cars? Mr. Wild's asked about the connectivity and the density, and I always questioned the connectivity. If you could explain the Ezel Lane and also, you know, the property to the south, as far as why y'all don't have any connectivity there, any reasoning for that? And as far as the schools go, we don't really have a lot that we can do with the schools. When I went to school, Fairhope High School, went from Weeks Bay all the way to Hurricane Crossroads, about 15 miles north of Spanish Ford. But of course, you could make it, it's in about 20 minutes from that area, because there's only one stoplight there. But, but it is a concern, certainly, but not that, you know, we necessarily have the regulations to address. But those are the four items that I took notes on. And then, of course, a lot of people were very concerned about the water. I assume y'all probably done some preliminary looks at that.
Yes, we have. And I'll start off with, you know, when we first started looking at this, we did, you know, I think you had mentioned and someone else had mentioned, you know, we're in the county, and we did a layout as traditional MOP, and we got somewhere in the range of 200 units. When we talked to our client, they really wanted to be in Fairhope. They can go an MOP route, but they said, you know, we don't want to take from Fairhope and not be in Fairhope. And so, as you know, a lot of places out in the county, they get a lot of city services, but they're not contributing, and, you know, we did some rough numbers, and we're thinking that just on impact fees and stuff like that, we're going to pay with being in Fairhope, we're looking at about a half a million that we're going to bring in just by bringing this in. I mean, as y'all are all well aware- going to bring in just by bringing this in. I mean, as y'all are all well aware, we could go two routes. We could annex as a PUD, or we can go MOP. But this is the path that they really felt strongly to be in Fairhope, and that's why we brought it to you, is this. Drainage, yes. I've designed several projects in this area and I've done several downstream analyses. And that road does flood. I mean, y'all have seen the pictures. I've seen them when we had community meetings. And so every time we've looked at a development in that area, we've paid particularly close attention to that system. And one of the developments, that road is actually under county control where it floods. And we showed the county those drainage issues. It's, you know, not our development's issue to fix. We just need to make sure that we don't make it any worse, and that's what we were doing. But we pointed out the issue to them, and I don't believe anything was done. That particular development never came off the ground. But I am familiar with it. When we were doing some preliminary pond sizing to make sure the pond area we had in there was big enough, we took into those downstream issues into account. And we are going to greatly reduce the amount of runoff coming from our particular piece of property. The majority of it actually comes off of the agricultural land. The Auburn Extension land comes across, and then also obviously coming down Bishop. But we're going to definitely do our part to reduce it as much as we can to help any downstream issues. Traffic was another question that's brought up. We actually have done a traffic study already. As far as the primary roads, there are no, no issues there. The only issue is 98 and Dire Road. That does recommend a left turn lane that we would be implementing when we came in for the MOP portion of it. And so, when we come in with the design. So there would be a left turn lane on Dire Road heading south on 98. Parking, you know, there are two parking spaces shown. I understand exactly what y'all are saying, and we'll go back to our clients and we'll, we'll see what we can do. What I'm leading to is we're going to ask y'all, you know, table this so we can take some of y'all's recommendations. And we're going to look at the rear elevations, see what we can do there, and come back to y'all next month with trying to address a couple of these items. Was there a point I missed? Interconnectivity, these are private roads. And so with that, we don't need to connect onto public. These won't be dedicated right of ways.
Question, Larry?
Yes.
You've already had a traffic study done?
Correct.
When was it done?
About a month ago.
And, and it said there was, I mean, there was no signalization needed at Dire and 98, nor on Bishop at Gayford Avenue Extension? I mean, Gayford Avenue?
Correct.
Really? These flying cars or these, I will tell you, you will, I spent a lot of time on Dire.
Mm-hmm.
And, and there are times that even late at night, instead of going on Dire out to 98, I have to go back around either the Bishop or that little one-lane street that goes by a little Terry the Ferry Nursery to get to the light at, at Gayford and, and 98 to be able to get across there. You can't turn left on Dire, it almost at any time without getting up on the, getting up on, in the median on the, on the divider. Anyway, my point is, is that you have a hard time convincing me that there's not something major got to be, have to be done there for any kind of a, a more dense development here.
Okay. Well, I'm sure the city staff will, when we get to that point, will review that.
And I know that's not, and certainly I know that's not, it's not necessary at this time with a zoning issue.
But what is the water issue to the, to the, that Rolling Hills area there? I've seen it flooded before.
The, the biggest issue is the culverts underneath them are really small. There's a bunch of them, but they're small, and it just builds up too quickly, and it overtops the road on very, very small rain events. It doesn't take 100-year storm to do it. It doesn't take 50-year from, it's been a while since I looked at the numbers, but it happens more frequently than it should.
So the water goes from y'all to them to Auburn?
Uh, no, we don't, we go, it goes from us underneath Bishop and then down to that roll, that, that low point in the road. So ours doesn't.
It goes through, it goes through that. And I've been there. I think I was there when these pictures were taken, actually. It happens more often than not, but.
Yeah, I've driven out there on some heavy rains.
That goes on to Auburn and into that big swale that eventually goes under 13, then has to go under 104, only to come back under 13 again. Yeah. And, and you're right. And you're right, exactly right. The culverts, they need, that whole thing needs to be jerked out and have a half-decent bridge put on those two lanes.
And the road centerline elevation needs to be raised up. It's too low.
I agree with that. Thank you. I just care.
But it's a county road.
Right. Okay. So your question, will we hold this over to the next month?
Yes, please.
All right. Do we need a motion on that, Hunter, or since it's his request?
Okay. I think this, I think this would be, having this many people, be a good time if you've got any comments about the future and our development in Fairhope. It would, I mean, there've been some issues that have been raised. It seems like a good time to kind of, I don't want to have an open debate, but just kind of make a couple of obvious, obvious things. And I, and if y'all would just let me have just a minute. The thing that I think is important to remember, and for all of you that have been there for an extended period of time or have been here in Fairhope, doesn't take a rocket scientist to remember 2006 and 2007. Everybody remember the big bubble? The big bubble? Yeah, I remember it. And then it crashed like crazy, too. But it's happened again, only now it's closer. And what typically happens in any kind of an economic program like that is the peaks get higher and the troughs get lower and the cycles get closer together. 2006, 2007 was only 13, 14 years ago. Man, that's no time. It's a blink of an eye. The thing I think that's important to understand about Fairhope in looking at it for as many years as I've been here, and for a lot of us that have been here forever, is the fact that, yes, it's growing. And, and what was, what was the comment somebody made? You don't want to be so successful that you ruin your success, or whatever it was. I don't remember how it was, but it's right. So we've got a community that many, many people want to come to. But what ends up happening? We're there again right now. Have you looked at what land prices are like? The people that are here are that we hoped that it would come here. Our kids, our children. My son can't live here. Well, he doesn't live here anyway, but he lives out of, out of town. But a lot of these people cannot afford, they want to be here in Fairhope, but they can't afford the kind of acre or half-acre lots or whatever the case may be. If you go and you look out on 181, go into, go into Daphne, go out on 181 in Daphne, go into Fairhope on 181. Go down 181, go in where it's already in the process of being 4 Lane right now, out in Old Field and all those other places. Andy told us 300 acres that, that D.R. Horton's got now. Look at what those kind of land prices are. Tell me who can afford that. So our, our, our issue has to do with what do we do to be able to accommodate the people. Now, people want to come here. From a school perspective, I don't know anything to tell you about that. It's not a matter that you can put up a fence and say you can't come here anymore. That's not going to happen. So it's, it's imperative for you as the public to have input into perhaps a new comprehensive plan that is coming fairly soon. And it's coming. It's something that, that is going to, it is much needed. It's coming. It will be worked on, and your involvement should be part of that. Now, know this, though. A comprehensive plan is only that. It's a plan. It's a guide. It's not the law. Within the law are your zoning regulations and, and your subdivision regulations. I think it's important to know, too, you look at Fairhope, in, in the city limits of Fairhope, there are massive numbers of properties, not even in the city limits. Our ability, or the city council's ability, to really control those, those, those properties, very limited. This is, just happens to be one of them. So, you know, encourage your neighbors. There are a lot of them. There's some out on Fairhope Avenue, right, right west, east of the school, right around the, the go-around. There are a lot of those properties right there. They're not even in the city limits. There are lots of them over here near where you all live that are not in the city. So there, there, there's involvement that, and there's input that you can have. And I just encourage you to, to be part of it. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Art spent how many years on the county?
Uh, I was on, 16 years on planning commission in the county.
And part of that time, they did a countywide zoning. That's his big pet peeve, is not having countywide zoning minus sidewalks. So we'll each get on our stump. And Art makes a very good point. You know, we just had something called the Barnwell Historical District that, you know, got voted through, that basically just states, you know, no zoning from Fairhope in the area. So just understand that, you know, a lot of people are pro-zoning and, and, you know, a lot of people aren't. But I've learned in my 20 years here that everybody wants zoning on their neighbor's land. We just don't want it on our own land. And that's me included. Hypocrite number one. But thank you for coming. And Mr. Raymond and Wilds, I think when the comprehensive plan comes up, y'all had a, a lot of good comments. So I hope y'all will volunteer. And, you know, a lot of people come out when the subdivision comes up, but really when the subdivision regulations are looked at and the comprehensive plans are looked at, that's the time to make the, you know, make the decisions and let people know what you want, because we pretty much have to follow those, you know, the rules and regulations that we have. But thank you for your input.
One, one, one more.
This will come back next, this will come back at our next meeting, at which time we'll then vote to make a recommendation for or against to the city council. We may or may not reopen the public hearing just based on, you know, what kind of changes there are on that. So.
Rebecca's got it.
Sorry. Just trying not to. Just to be fair to the developer, if they're asking for time to work on it, it seems like we should air any concerns we have with, with the overall development. And I had a few more, and some other people might as well, but I'd hate to just send them off and then come back and we haven't said anything else that might be an issue. So several things. I, I, building on what you said, I do see the need for density in general in Fairhope and, and affordable, more affordable housing. I think that's something where it's always going to be a struggle. Where is it appropriate? And, and what kind of density and all this? So I'm, I'm not opposed to dense development in any way. I have a, you know, I have a problem making an exception to allow more density in, I like density in areas that are served by robust existing infrastructure. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna make an exception to be more dense than our town home zoning allows you to be, it'd be nice to see that next to a whole bunch of shops or in a village, or next to, you know, areas where, where that density would feel a little more appropriate. So I, I, you know, sort of see the wisdom of what Hunter is, is saying with, with that. And I, I'm not quite wrapping my head around why to make, why not just do town home development. And I, I hear you saying that you don't just want a row of town homes, and especially in this large site, you definitely wouldn't want just rows and rows of town homes. But looking at the example that Hunter provided, I thought that was actually pretty good guidance for town homes, but a mix of public and private spaces. You know, where somebody could have a place to grill or that wouldn't junk up the whole lot, you know, or a place to just sit outside and get some sun and, or grow tomatoes or whatever. And then there's just a, to elaborate a little bit further on the rear facades, you know, they are very visible, not only from adjacent streets, but, but in defining the character of that open space. And I feel like they could use a little more attention. And looking at, you know, not to put too fine a point on it, but a five-by-12 concrete slab is not a patio. It's a sidewalk. And if only part of it's covered, then the rain is landing on that, is bouncing up against the house and eventually is rotting it out. You know, so it's just, just quality outdoor spaces. We live in such a beautiful place. It's good for people to get outside. I, I would love to see a little more attention given to that. And I understand there is always a balance between affordability and how much attention can be given, but it seems like there's, there's some room for improvement there.
I got a, I got one for you, too, Larry, David. And this is just straight out the barrel. I don't see anything, a PUD is intended to be used where there is something unique that is put into the development. I don't see anything unique about this. So if, I guess what I would encourage you, either do something unique that makes it reasonable for us to grant a PUD, or change what you're, change what you're going to do and look more to the town home type of development. But I don't see where this is, meets the intention of, of a planned unit development. That's my thing. And one more, one more thing. Go back on what I was just talking about a minute ago about involvement. It certainly had the ability, and I don't want to see a show of hands, I don't, it's water under the bridge now, but there was an attempt by this planning commission to do an overlay district on scenic 98, I mean, on, on 98 to 4 Lane. 98 to 4 Lane. All of you should have been involved in that because it directly affected the entrance to your, to your neighborhood. Now, well, maybe some of you were involved in it, but I can tell you, it got deep-sixed by principally the, a lot of landowners on the south end of the 4 Lane. And we didn't, we didn't have the support. So there again, get involved because that was something that had the ability to really help the future development and, and maintain some semblance of control over the development of, of the 4 Lane up in your area. So just, just another example.
All right. Like, anybody else wish to add anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to start adding some information when, when something is tabled, just so everyone knows I'm applicant tonight. We're already in a week into reviewing June's cases, so it kind of accelerates the time. Being a zoning change, we won't have to look at the, the technical merits. But to meet our deadlines, get packets out, get our letters out to adjacent property owners, those sort of things, we really need to have revisions by the 17th. And it can always go to the next month, but the 17th is kind of our target date, and we'll work with them in between then to.
17th of May to get to June?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Hunter. So people in the audience, this may be on June, maybe on July. So just keep your eyes open. Thank you, Hunter. All right. If there's nothing else to add, we'll go on to the next item. If y'all are going to stay here, find them out, I'll give about two minutes for y'all to clear out. But please save your talking for outside because I don't want to be here all night. So thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is Adcock Subdivision, SD 2121. And Hunter, I'll give you a minute to go ahead and get back up to the beginning of the schedule. Thanks for being able to do that so quick.
Joe has got that covert for us.
It is.
Robert Chang, you probably get through these in about 20 minutes, Chang.
Yes.
I'm going to set records.
Open public hearing, closing public hearing. Art, motion?
Oh, yes.
All in favor? 2122, Art, motion? Oh, you open, close, public.
Yeah, we going now.
We can't have a consent agenda, right? We're just, just put all, everything there.
Give it a minute.
Okay. This is a two-lot minor subdivision. This is on Highway 98. There is an intersection of Marianne Beach Road. The subject property is 8.9 acres, and the applicant wishes to divide the property in two separate lots. The Lot 1 does have an existing one-story brick building and asphalt parking. Proposed Lot 2 is approximately 3.88 acres, eight acres, and is currently vacant. Property is shown on the left. This is unzoned Baldwin County, within our planning jurisdiction. The aerial is to the right in the image on the, on the screen. This has really what kind of got this one, we've been reviewing this for, for a few months. Scott Hudson is here with GMC. I believe Doug Bailey's who we work with most of the time and has, looking at, I think he's, he's taking another job. So we're, Scott is here to fill in. Fire protection was the issue on this. There was not a hydrant, fire hydrant around. They are installing a fire hydrant as shown on the map that will be approximately the, where the split between these two lots across Highway 98. the, where the split between these two lots across Highway ninety-eight. Uh, just a couple of notes. This is, um, will trigger this into, because it into a major subdivision. So, once installed, it will have to come back to final plat. Um, the sidewalks are required and the subdivision staff looks at what's around. And this is one of those cases where we recommend an easement be provided, but not the sidewalks installed. So, we have a couple of, uh, conditions here. I think I've, I've covered most of these notes. If you have any questions, we can refer back. But staff is recommending preliminary approval of SD twenty-one point twenty-one with the following conditions. An engineer will need to confirm the water pressure flow meets the International Fire Code and receive approval from the city's Water and Sewer Superintendent prior to final plat approval. And number two, a revision of plat to include sidewalks to the utility and drainage easements where the site abuts road frontage. And just to be clear on what that is, there are already easements provided for utilities and drainage. Just adding the word sidewalk, should we ever need that, would be what we're recommending.
Thank you. Any questions for Hunter at this time? All right. Scott, do you have anything to add? In that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This is out on, um, Highway ninety-eight, um, in Barnwell near the Marianne Beach Road intersection, Turner Lane. I knew where I grew up, by the way, but I've got nothing to do with it. I'll say. Uh, anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to commissioners.
Motion, Mr. Chairman. SD twenty-one, twenty-one, Adcock subdivision. I move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
I will both in a second. Any further discussion? Um, we got long-winded enough, Hunter, but at some point, when everything settles down, we probably ought to change it where we can, you know, do a fire hydrant and a sidewalk easement on a minor subdivision just for y'all's sanity and streamline stuff a little bit, I think. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Uh, next item on the agenda, SD twenty-one, twenty-two, public hearing to consider the request of Robert U. Harris, um, Stephen Urbannick for preliminary plat approval for Overland subdivision, phase one. It's a thirty-two lot subdivision, fifteen acres at the intersection of Cannon Road forty-eight and Blueberry Lane.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, this case and the follow, the one following will be phase one and phase two. So, I'll go a little bit slower in phase one and then kind of, uh, speed up in phase two where there are differences. Uh, this is a follow-up to an Overland PUD that was approved. It is awaiting, uh, council approval. So, you'll see a condition there that any, if, if the commission so chooses to approve, it will be conditional that that PUD is approved by the city council. Uh, the application originally is a PUD with sixty-one single-family lots and a sixteen-unit townhome apartment, uh, development. This is split, as I said, in phase one and phase two. This is phase one consisting of thirty-two of the sixty-one single-family lots. The zoning map is shown on the left. This will be coming in as a conditional annexation in the PUD. So, it will be a planned unit development. The aerial is shown on the right hand of the screen. There is a floodway coming in on the western side of the lot, traveling south, and wetlands, as you'll see on the plat, um, on the western side of the, the plat as well, or image as well. Phase one contains what you see on the screen and generally this meets, uh, everything that's in the PUD. Uh, there is a, a small issue at the very top of the, the screen. Applicant is showing a sidewalk on Fairhope Avenue that comes out. And basically, there's a large box culvert there that is adjacent to the, to, um, Fairhope Avenue, Highway forty-eight. And there's enough room within the right-of-way to install that sidewalk. That would probably be the best, um, for, for everyone involved. However, that is a Baldwin County Highway Department right-of-way. Uh, we have not heard back from them. So, uh, whether they're gonna allow that, if they do not, the option will be coming into the, uh, into the lot and providing an easement and crossing a wetland there that is doable. Um, so, the applicant has submitted a alternate plan. If that's the case, and staff supports that. So, we don't get involved in any, um, delays on that one. So, basically what we'll do moving forward between now and final plat, hopefully the county will get back and with those comments. Um, if they so choose to approve the sidewalk within the right-of-way right there, we move forward. If not, there's an alternate plan and we can clean that up at final plat. The, um, phase one is, is again, um, it's, it's, everything is matching within the PUD. The, just a point of clarification, we do have within our, uh, there's a, the covenant state, all sidewalks shall be built by each owner on their lot. Uh, our subdivision regulations require those right now to be built before final plat is submitted and street trees. So, just covenants are not overriding our regulations. That's just, uh, memorializing, as Buford would say. I do have a red condition on here that I want to retract, um, and clear up on a couple of these cases. The, um, when we looked at some of the plans that were included in the packet, I think we got a couple of different versions. There in phase two, which you'll see shortly, um, and it's in your packet, there is a trail within the common area and a bridge crossing the wetlands. Um, that is, as the developer has requested, going to be installed within phase two, which will be the second phase of construction in the next case, and we're okay with that. With that said, we do have three conditions. Um, just to memorialize, all sidewalks and street trees shall be installed prior to smidling of final plat, including the sidewalk along Fairhope Avenue. Uh, this is, does require the approval of CZ twenty-one point zero-one by the city council without substantial changes to the current proposed site plan. And then the highway department must approve the sidewalk layout in the right-of-way along Fairhope Avenue or the depiction of an easement for the sidewalk along Fairhope Avenue at the final plat stage for sidewalks in the right-of-way. So, there will be an easement for the sidewalk that is installed. Um, and then please ignore the red condition four.
No, you can say easement. They will install the sidewalk there.
Yes, sir. That will be installed. Uh, I believe that will require a bridge crossing that wetland. Um, that is not floodway there. Floodway comes in a little later. So, there's another bridge in phase two that will require no, no rise certification. Um, I don't believe this will require, um, any ADM permits, but that remains to be seen. We haven't looked at that in detail.
Hunter, when did we see, uh, case ZC twenty-one oh-one?
January.
Why is the city council not moved on that? And if the city...
It's our fault.
Huh?
It's our fault on getting those advertised.
Your fault?
I'll take it.
I'll be ashamed of myself.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm just wondering why we're hearing a preliminary plat approval. I guess that's what this is.
Yes, sir.
I mean, a PUD.
We just got a little, you know, hairy with staff changes.
Oh, okay. Well, that's fine. I don't have a problem. I just, uh, would like to see us get cart ahead of a, a horse and, and a number of these going forward. But if, I mean, that's fine. I understand.
Yes, sir.
And look, I understand staff changes and, and issues associated with it. So, I'm good.
But I, I do acknowledge what you're, and typically, I would say the same thing. We won't even, we don't like to get a preliminary plat in front of you before a PUD is approved. But we have some...
That was my question. You answered the question. Thank you.
Okay.
Why'd you change your mind on condition number four?
When we looked at the plans, there was a different set of plans. The, some of the questions were answered in review. And, and, um, if you'll see on the staff report, Carla Davis has reviewed this. She's actually on vacation this week. So, I'm coming in and looking at conflicting plans and, and quite literally wrote that. The staff report shows one through three. So, we wrote this on the slide today as we were looking at something. So, um, we're okay with the, the condition as...
It was my first reaction too, because it seemed like one of the best amenities they have on the site and I'd hate for it to go away. But, um, there is a lot of green space without it. I just was curious.
We got two right here. Looks like they're gonna shotgun them.
Yeah, yeah.
Any more questions for Hunter? Thank you, Hunter. Um, do y'all have anything to add back there in SC world?
Um, just a quick update. We finally have gotten a verbal approval from the county. They are gonna let us come across the culverts. Um, we will have to get back on the property after that, but, um, that will keep us from having to do a pedestrian bridge right there. So, um, we'll share that correspondence with you. So, y'all have it for your records. But, um, other than that, um, we're, we're good with the conditions one through three.
Thank you, Larry.
I'll answer any questions y'all have.
All right. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners. Gentlemen's, questions, concerns, and not all entertain a motion.
Motion. Uh, case SD twenty-one, twenty-two, Overland subdivision, phase one. I move that we approve subject staff recommendations.
Did you close the public hearing?
Yes, I did. So, I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Um, I've got a second. Who do you want to put down on that? Let's let Rebecca go. Please. Ladies first.
There you go, Rebecca.
All right. Um, and under further, yes, Larry, under further, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure that staff recommendations are going to be approved.
That's correct. Yes. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is phase two of the same project.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, basically, everything I said for the last one, except for this, is twenty-nine of the, the sixty-one single-family lots. Um, little small detail here. So, this is as referred to in the previous case. The trail and bridge crossing the wetlands are shown, um, on the plan and on the screen here. Again, meets, uh, meets the PUD. There is a condition on this one. Um, I believe, let's get, let's see on that one. I believe the original plan had a condition for the street, the, this, the, um, highway department approval, at least one version. I don't know if that's in your packet. So, we will not need that, um, that requirement. Okay. So, amending the recommendation of approval here in red, um, that should strike the first sentence in condition three. Otherwise, I believe those conditions are the same. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna leave this on the screen. Just ask the applicant to check me on that. See if they have an opportunity to, uh, correct me if I'm wrong. The, the sidewalk walk along Fairhope Avenue in condition one will not be installed in phase two. That will be installed in phase one. So, I can amend those. We can, we can strike the condition, should strike, uh, after the comma in condition one and the first sentence in condition three.
Okay. Thank you, Hunter. Um, and do you have anything to add, Larry? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Um, Larry, just an FYI, the Single Tax Corporation has a, uh, plan to, uh, level out that overgrown area just, uh, to the west of the River Mill subdivision entrance and make that into a public park and turn it over to the city of Fairhope and connect the sidewalks, you know, from River Mill to y'all's project and then Walmart the other way. And they connect on the east side to River Station. And then try to get over to Blueberry Lane if we can get the easements and connect to those apartments of Blueberry Lane and eventually to Gafer. We had some people come and make that, you know, make a request that we do the sidewalks. And then we had that lease turned back over to us because I thought we had the floodplain. Um, I thought the floodplain was further to the west than y'all, we being the Single Tax Corporation. But that floodplain is on y'all's phase two. Is that correct?
I think it does. It's got northwest and it's on the river.
Okay. Cause I know we've got that same issue, but we're just gonna open ours up. But it's a great project that y'all are doing, by the way. It's, it's really a very, very nice one. All right. Commissioners, any questions, comments?
I had a quick comment. I was just gonna, I also wanted to just appreciate, um, I like this, I like the way that you guys are treating the green space. I think, um, you know, I mean, we're getting to the point in Fairhope where the only undeveloped areas are the undevelopable, you know, our gullies and floodplains, but, but not treating that as this forgotten wasteland, you know, treating it as an amenity, I, I think is a great thing. And it's, you know, an amenity that provides a lot of services for us. So, the more, you know, we can kind of engage those areas, and it's challenging, you're having to, you know, get a no rise and build this bridge. But I appreciate that they're doing it. I think that'll be a really great spot.
It's a great project. Really is. Um, any more questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Did you close the public hearing?
I did.
I move we approve phase SD twenty-one point three, Overland subdivision phase two with staff recommendations, amended staff recommendations.
Okay. I've got a motion to approve, subject to amended staff recommendations, and a second from Council McConyers. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next item on the agenda is Fairhope Landing, uh, public hearing for provision investments. This is a two-lot minor subdivision, um, a quarter mile south of, excuse me, on Highway one-eighty-one, a quarter mile south of State Highway one-oh-four. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Jeffries with the city of Fairhope. As you said, this is a minor subdivision. It's Fairhope Landing Minor Subdivision. Directly following this case is also an MOP application for lot one that is in this minor subdivision. Um, it's approximately twelve-point-four-four acres and all located on the east side of Highway one-eighty-one, approximately a quarter mile south of Highway one-oh-four. On your screen on the left side is the zoning image. Uh, Hollowbrook subdivision is across, almost across the street, highlighted in yellow for the zone portion. The rest of the surrounding area is unzoned and an aerial on your right side. It's kind of a unique-shaped lot. Looks like, uh, you know, two little nubs there that front on Highway one-eighty-one. The southern area is the portion that is being carved out as lot two, as shown on the plat. Again, that middle area is not part of this subdivision. This will essentially be a very large flag lot for lot two, where the MOP will be in our next case. The drainage, nothing is changing, none of the existing flow patterns. The proposed subdivision, there's no infrastructure improvements as with our minor subdivisions. Therefore, a lot of the major components are not applicable to this. A traffic letter was submitted indicating that a traffic study was not triggered. Uh, staff did, however, require some correspondence from ALDOT indicating that they have seen plans and at the time of ALDOT permitting, the access would be a restricted access. Uh, the area of one-eighty-one and this area is currently under, under construction for the widening project that the state is doing. So, we wanted to ensure that this wasn't gonna be any, any conflict with the proposed plans that ALDOT has for what's going on. And we were provided that information. It does meet the approval standards of our subdivision regulations. Uh, staff recommends approval with the following condition, to add a note indicating a ten-foot sidewalk easement along the front lot lines of lot one and lot two that abuts State Highway one-eighty-one. Uh, happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff. And we have SC Civil with us tonight to answer questions on behalf of the applicant.
Any questions for staff at this time?
I got a, uh, I got just one thing. If we put a sidewalk in front of lot one and lot two, who does the sidewalk in a piece that's in the middle?
Yeah, he was asking for an easement. I don't think you were asking for a sidewalk.
Oh, I know. But I mean, if, if they built a sidewalk in lot one, in front of lot one and lot two, who builds a sidewalk to connect the two in the middle of that thing? Who's, who's responsible?
Whenever somebody gets a building permit for that middle lot. If we were to require the sidewalks...
Somebody with a lot of money.
If you were to require the sidewalks on either side...
Yeah.
Then that's all you would require and they wouldn't connect. And then whenever somebody would develop the middle, then they would connect. I mean, go out through Quell Creek... I mean, go out through Quell Creek, and you'll see numerous places where people built sidewalks in front of their houses at the time of permitting, and you've still got places 20-plus years later where the sidewalks don't connect, in Quell Creek, and in Summer Lakes, and quite a few places. So that's always the question.
Was that, when that development was done, what did they require the sidewalks to be built when the houses were developed?
When the houses were built, yes.
Damn, okay.
We've gone back and forth, because the developers hate the requirement that the sidewalks be built, you know, prior to final plat approval, so we did that for a while, we have done, you know, required everything to be built before final plat approval, we have required everything to be built within two years before the bonds released, and the problem with that is, you know, in prior administrations, when they weren't built, you know, people didn't have the guts to go back and make the developer build them.
But if you built them early, then you'd got crack by the concrete trucks and the...
So there's no free lunch on it, you know, as they say, no free lunch, there's...
But this is just asking for an easement.
But this, here, we're just doing an easement, because at some point, hopefully, there'll be some kind of a grant that'll put sidewalks all the way down, and I don't know if, I wonder if a 10-foot easement's big enough there on this. At some point, somebody'll be putting a sidewalk down, green, I would assume. You know, you've got, well, I won't go into all the details of what's coming, but that area is probably the fastest-growing area in Fairhope right now, as far as its pure numbers. All right, any further questions for our city staff? If not, I'll go ahead and see, Larry, you have anything to add on this? I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, this is for a two-lot subdivision on Highway 181, just south of 104.
My name is Jerry McManus, 14747 Underwood Road, Somerville, Alabama, and I'm coming here tonight on behalf of Baldwin County Sewer Service to have our letter that was sent to you guys officially, put on the record in the accompanying documents that supports 21-21.25 as well as 21.26, and I know that may be a little bit unusual, but since this is part of the process and the conversation about who the sewer provider is for this development is still ongoing, we felt that it was important to include this in the documentation for this development, and to be on record as well as in the minutes. And so if you guys could grant that request, we would appreciate it.
That'd be fine, Jerry, if you'll hand that to our Secretary of the Day, I appreciate that, and we do confirm that we did get that letter, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Anybody else for the public wish to speak to this item? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and turn the meeting over to the Commissioners.
Move, Mr. Chairman, SD 2125, Fairhope Landing, move that we approve subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item, SD 21.26, Fairhope Landing, coupling with the one ahead, yes, sir, Mike?
Good evening again. This application is for a 76-unit multiple occupancy project that was Lot Two of the previous case on that minor subdivision. It's approximately 11.16 acres, again, located on the east side of Highway 181, about a quarter mile south of 104, to be known as Fairhope Landing RV Resort. The property is currently unzoned, Baldwin County, inside the planning jurisdiction of the City of Fairhope, and as such, being reviewed as a multiple occupancy project under our Fairhope subdivision regulations. This is for preliminary approval, and if approved, an application for final MOP approval must be submitted to close out the project to allow to report any necessary documents. Again, the same aerial on the screen depicting the lots. The site layout has the entrance coming in off of 181, that opens into a parking lot, clubhouse, pool area, little play area, and then enters into a circular turnstile for the RV slots that are there. Retention pond is located on the northeast corner of the site. There are sidewalks and walking trails around the development and through the center of the common area. Again, a traffic study was not warranted due to the number of the average daily traffic counts, and the letter supplied by the engineer of record. Staff required correspondence from ALDOT as well, verifying they allowed access for the development. ALDOT confirmed that a restricted access would be granted, and after the widening of 181, a permanent access could be permitted installed. Currently, ALDOT is allowing a temporary construction entrance in and out, and if approved, and built out before the development of 181 is complete, they'll have a temporary access, and then once the improvements are completed at 181, they'll be able to actually apply for the permanent entrance in that same location. Drainage for this was done by a third party, Neil Schaefer. The review comments provided from Neil Schaefer were addressed by the applicant and determined to follow Fairhope's subdivision regulations. Quick overview, the water is collected in a series of inlets, underground drainage pipes and ditches, and will discharge into the proposed wet pond on the northeast corner of the property. 25% green space was required due to the density, 2.86 acres is being provided, as shown in the site data table, just slightly over the required 25%. Wetland report was provided verifying no wetlands or streams were located on the property. Wanted to point out that any desire to subdivide or sell lots in the future will require the property brought into compliance with the regulations of the authority having jurisdiction. Staff's recommendation is to approve with the following conditions, that the clubhouse, pool, and amenities be installed in conformance with the submitted landscape plans, and that the clubhouse, pool, and all amenities are installed prior to acceptance of an application for final MOP.
You said you had a wetland plan that said there's no wetlands on the site?
Yes, sir.
What's that up in the northeast corner? Look at your person, look at your person, right there.
Yes, sir.
You see that gray area in that northeast corner?
Yes, sir, I do.
That's a drain. Is that a wetland?
According to the report received by staff...
Did you forget that little corner?
No, sir.
Question sometimes the validity of the reports that we get, but it's obvious what that is. If you, I pulled it up on a bigger aerial photograph, county photograph, and the whole thing drains out across the adjoining properties through an open ditch, through that pasture.
Yes, sir.
But that is what that is, that's just for informational purposes.
And the engineer for the application may be able to answer that question in a little bit greater detail.
Well, let's wait till he comes up. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you, Mike. All right, Larry, you're on.
Hey, Larry, is that a wetland?
Well, let him give his presentation first.
According to the wetland expert, it's not, but we also recognize as a drainage area, and if you, over, if you look at, if you look at the way we shaped our pond, we stayed out of that corner.
I see it.
So we recognize there is flow through there. At the time of the wetland delineation, they tested for the normal triggers, and it did not have the hydroxols and the other conditions that would normally trigger it as being a wetland, but we looked at the contours and saw that water was flowing through there, and we didn't want that to erode our dam of our pond, so we pulled back.
Yeah, I don't know, who was Neil Schaefer?
Neil Schaefer didn't do the drainage design, they did the drainage review for the city.
For Fairhope?
For y'all. It was kind of confusing the way it was worded, but they just reviewed our calculations.
Are y'all going to charge extra for lots 60 and... For lots, I couldn't read the numbers there, 60 and 48 and 45 and 30, where people don't have to back in?
I'm sure they will. You have a camper you're looking for?
Just go forward.
Are you looking for the rate?
I can't back up with mirrors, I always wonder, but I don't have a camper, prospects. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't have really much of a presentation ready for this, I mean, I think the staff report went over everything well enough, and I'm just here if y'all have any questions or any comments.
All right, well, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time, does anybody wish to speak to this item? And Jerry, we've got your letter, and we know that you want it for both items. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, and turn the meeting over to the Commissioners. Anybody?
Come on, guys, step up.
I was just reading the wetland, and I didn't do it while Larry was still up here, but it sounds like they just, they just looked at maps and surveys instead of a field assessment, is that true? Sorry.
No, that's fine. No, they did a field assessment, and there were photos within that report of their field assessment.
But that one you're looking at is the review from the city.
No, I'm looking at Dewberry Cathy Burnett, but I just looked at a lot of stuff, so I may have forgotten.
There should be some photos on an additional page where they did a field investigation as well.
It's probably in the full-length version.
And we may have purged some pages, you know, this is already a huge document.
I realize, yeah.
If we included every page, it would have been in the thousands.
Well, if there is a field, that was my main question, I can see if somebody was just looking at a map, I could miss something, and I know you're staying out of it, but I feel better knowing there is a field assessment.
Thank you. All right, the...
Can I still, can I say something?
Go ahead, real quick, the public hearing's been closed.
I live near a store here.
If you'll come up and state your name and your address, I shouldn't let you speak, because the public hearing's been closed, but if you just have a very quick comment before we vote, you can state your name and your address, but I'm breaking the Roberts Rule of Order.
That's right.
I'm just wondering about the traffic issue...
You can state your name and your address.
Andrea Cherry, 21684B, Highway 181. That, when I pull out onto 181, and it's a little bit better right now with the new, with the new road, but there's a hill that goes down by Mosley, and the cars come up that hill, they're going about 60 miles an hour, and I'm driving a Prius, and if I turn right, which is the easy way, people are coming up behind me, and they're upset, because I'm not going 60 miles an hour within the first 20 feet of leaving my driveway, and they have to slow down, and it makes, you know, people are just so impatient these days. What is it going to be like when a 50-foot RV just towing a car behind it is going to pull out of there? And apparently, Jeff Lane, who's doing this whole thing, I lost my train of thought, this is going to be an overnight place, it's not going to be a place where people live, it's going to be an overnight place for $80 a month. So you're going to have, that's who have these, is the people that are going to pay that, 80 bucks a month, or 80 bucks a night, are the people that have these huge RVs, it's not people in small RVs, it's not. Are they really, are they really going to want to come to Fairhope for 80 bucks a night? And then they can't even go, they can't even park their RVs downtown because of our laws here. And my other comment is that RV parks, there are lots and lots of dogs, for every RV that doesn't have a dog, there's another RV that has two or three or four, and granted, most people will pick the poop up from the dogs, but you're going to have all the urine from all those dogs. It's like living next to a kennel with no sewage for the dogs.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll go ahead and reclose the public hearing at this time, and have y'all done the traffic study as far as people pulling out on 181?
Well, first, the traffic study, it wasn't warranted, we went ahead and actually did prepare one, I didn't share it with staff, just because it wasn't warranted, ALDOT has seen it, and, you know, that's what was dictating that we didn't need a turn lane or an acceleration lane, you know, this development will be tied on to when there are four lanes, and so, you know, if someone can't accelerate, they'll have a lane, the people that are impatient will have a lane to go around them with.
Sure.
So it will be a ride-in, ride-out, develop, as we have shown on here, that is the new four-lane design that we're showing the connection on to, and so all of our incoming traffic will be coming from the south, and our outbound traffic will have to head north, there'll be nobody trying to head south coming out of this development, there won't be a means for that, but, but yes, we've shared that with ALDOT, and that's how we came up with this configuration for the access.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, any questions, concerns, if not, I'll entertain a motion. I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations, I assume?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve subject to staff recommendations, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Turning the page. Next item on the agenda, SD 2127, public hearing to consider the request of Fairhope Single Tax 68V Long Branch, this 2019, for a preliminary plat approval for a 28-lot subdivision on 18.71 acres at the Twin Beach Road between County Road 13 and Thompson Hall Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update, Long Branch is something you've all seen, I believe, if you were here two years ago, slightly over two years ago, the Long Branch subdivision on Twin Beach Road, Twin County Road 13 and Thompson Hall Road, was approved by this commission on April 1st, 2019. If you recall, I believe it was last month, or potentially the one, the month before, we kind of asked about a, this expired the week before a meeting, so the week after, before we got an application to extend. So this is preliminary plat, permit has not been, was not pulled, and the request for extension did not make it in in time. So this is practically the same subdivision, there are a couple of minor changes, but in all effect, this is the same conversations that were had a couple of years ago, so if you need any, have any questions, I do want to make a correction on this, this page, it says the applicant failed to begin construction within the one-year time period, that is a two-year, as you know, between preliminary plat and final plat. This property is, as we said, in between 13 and Thompson Hall Road on Twin Beach, it's shown on the zoning map on the left, and the aerial imagery on the right. This is a 28-lot subdivision, that does have wetlands as shown on the plan. The larger lots than we typically see, we've got 15,000 square foot is the largest, and the smallest is 12,195 square feet. The setbacks are 35 front and rear, 10-foot on side, and 20-foot street-side setback. There is a utility easement on all lot lines. On the Twin Beach side, there is wetlands, and I think there was a lot of debate about installation of sidewalks, so that was not installed, we're supporting that same conversation. We would like to see an easement there provided, in case we ever do need a sidewalk on Twin Beach, crossing those wetlands, so we do make that request in the conditions of approval. The, there were concerns from citizens about gopher tortoises on the property, an official letter was submitted with the new application confirming that a survey was conducted by a senior environmental scientist on January 24th, 2021, stating there was nothing found on the site. A community meeting was held at our request, just to kind of let the community know, it's required anyway, but, you know, our main goal there was to let people know that this is the same subdivision that was approved, it's not coming back asking for more lots, smaller lots, more density, those sort of things. So drainage was approved, that's, nothing has changed there. The waters, there are some sewer upgrades that are changing, so that is one of the changes, and because of our coordination with the installation of wind sidewalks and street trees, those will need to be done for the final plat, but other than that, must coordinate with Fairhope Utilities and Waste Water Superintendent on the sewer upgrades, must receive approval from Public Works Regarding Traffic Calming Device, that was a condition in the previous one, and revise the plat to pick a sidewalk easement along the Common Area Three, where this is currently, where there's currently no sidewalk. where this is currently, where there's currently no sidewalk depicted. So other than that, staff recommends approval of this subdivision.
I remember a discussion, what was that, in, it was 2019, wasn't that right? What was the discussion about gopher tortoises?
I, I wasn't here for that one.
Do you remember?
We did read the...
What was, what was the purpose? Because gopher tortoises are not threatened or endangered in Baldwin County.
It's not in our regulations.
That was the discussion, you brought it up during the meeting, that they were not on the protected species list.
Well, I understand, but they're not, they're not threatened or endangered in Baldwin County, so what was the...
Apprenticeship...
There were comments from concerned citizens that were around that, that they have done...
But I remember that was in 2019, too.
Yes, this, this letter from the scientist was to state that there were no burrows found on site, just to clear that question.
Any further questions for staff?
I have a question, Hunter.
Yes, sir.
I don't have any issues with the subdivision or even providing an extension, but they've had two years, we haven't done anything. This extension is for another one or two years.
This is a, this is not an extension, so because it expired...
This is a whole new application.
This is a whole new application.
All right, so what if we get to the end of this period, and they haven't done anything, they have the opportunity to extend it at the end of this?
Yes, sir. The, and that's, that's the planning commission's prerogative, it, it's not a given.
They can ask for an extension, and traditionally, if, if no improvements have been made, if improvements have been made, we almost always grant the extensions for, you know, one to two years. If no improvements have been made, you know, all bets are off, but generally, if there aren't any major subdivision changes, we, we do grant the extension, but if they're like major subdivision changes with something like green space or LID, then generally, they, you know, have to come back.
I just, just wanted to make sure that we don't have a, a, a situation where we're getting lots of subdivisions getting approved, and then you get to the wire, and we haven't really had the opportunity to start anything, so you run out there and just push a little dirt around, I mean, do we have a definition of what do we consider commencing construction?
It's not legal at all, it's just, you know, the, the regulation basically states, you know, that we don't have any requirement to give an extension at all, we just traditionally have, and, you know...
And the fallback is you don't, you know, the, the preliminary plat expires, so I, you know, I think that's...
That's the pressure.
In the planning commission's wheelhouse to, to make that call.
Hunter, what is a traffic calming device?
In this situation, it reads that it was, it was a speed bump that was approved, but traffic calming devices come in different flavors, so you'll see some in some of our subdivisions where it's actually a, an island in the middle of the road where you'll see, where you have to slow down to go around. I believe this one was specifically called out as a, as a speed bump, speed table, maybe?
Land mines.
And, and Harry, this is probably one of those things that we were discussing in a, in a meeting, and details, we didn't bother with details because our Public Works Department has some specifics on what they'll look at, so we'll let the developer talk with our Public Works and work whatever they're...
I don't think I've ever seen one of these in a, in a plan before.
It's usually, there, there are actually quite a few historically. We, we don't like, we try to stay away from the speed tables and speed bumps. So it's, it's more aesthetic, you can do, do something, but, you know, this was approved then and debated, and, you know, we didn't want to retract that statement.
All right.
There's, there's a certain distance that you can have a straightaway, and if you exceed that distance, then you have to have a traffic calming device, like a speed bump or one of those little turn things. Now that we mentioned it, you'll probably start noticing them a good bit, so often you get just, you get just trained by them, and you go around, and you never think, why in the world does this, is there a tree in the middle of the road right here?
I believe you'll see one in the, the next final plat, is there in this section, I know there's some out there. Or Old Battles.
I had a kind of a nitpicky comment, but it just, I felt, I thought it was strange. I know, like many of the thing, the cases that we've seen today, they've had, hope that the city will be diligent, and the developer will be diligent with stormwater, you know, pollution prevention controls during construction because of the proximity to water bodies, but just, I just found it strange, you're looking at the, the BMPs, and the salt fences are like, are not continuous. There's a salt fence shown here, and then there's a gap, and there's, you know, drainage going, aiming at that gap towards the, the blue line, and, and then there's, yeah, so the BMP plant seems strange, there were gaps in the salt fence, and I would expect it to be continuous because it's receiving erosion continuously, so...
We will make a note of that, and we, we always have a pre-construction meeting before any construction begins, and I will assure you that Ken Burmeister is out there every, every time and giving, making sure people are aware of the BMP and tree protection requirements, so.
Do you think it's, I, this is the one I did not drop out to, how I missed this one, Hunter? But do you think now, two years later, we need to require that sidewalk to be built, or you're pretty comfortable with the right of way?
And we do have Thompson Hall, quadplexes are, are you still here, on the, to the west of here? Is it on the west of Thompson Hall?
It's on the east side.
East side, we do have Carmel Fort Park Flats on the south that is approved. So I mean, Twin Beach is, is going, I, I'd be honest, the, you know, caller reviewed a lot of the minutes in that previous meeting, and not being here, I'm not sure exactly what that discussion was of, of why not to install that. So if, if we need, we might need to do a little research on that one if you need a better answer.
And I could go either way on that one, you know, that area, like you said, we've got a lot of development, it's not quite like 104, but, you know, you got a Dollar General fairly close by and areas to walk to, and it's just...
And we have...
You have a school right down the road, and, I mean, that area just tells a pop, and even though it's not 104, it's pretty fast-growing there.
And we have installed the, the sidewalk on that side of Twin Beach. Basically, I believe it extends all the way along Fairfield, so that's the orange and blue shown. I believe it goes all the way to, over, or is it all the way to 13? Over, over, as shown on this map, so Highway 13, so it does stop there, so a continuation of that sidewalk would, we would support. I don't know what challenges that provides, I know there was wetlands on the site, so you might want to ask the engineer. Think about that one.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody wish to speak to this item? Well, I guess the developer. Is that Dewberry?
Good evening, y'all, I'm Melissa Curry with Dewberry Engineers. First time I've met you in person, been on the phone with y'all and video, so nice to meet everybody. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have of this development.
I just was asking about the sidewalk in the front, I've mentioned earlier, my pet peeve is always sidewalks. I feel like, you know, safety issues, everybody talks about red clay, but, you know, I get concerned like when I see people, you know, dumping trash on the, you know, the bike trail down on Scenic 98, and bikes going out the road and off the road and out the road and off the road, and subdivisions with cars parked over the sidewalks, and seeing people push their strollers out in the road and then back around onto the sidewalk, I just have always been very, very pro-sidewalk. And I was just wondering if this, if a sidewalk could be an issue on this for any particular reason?
Not within the development, I mean, they'll be putting sidewalks in with each home as they get built. Are you asking specifically about the long...
I was going on Twin Beach Road with that area where eventually, as these sidewalks start getting connected, people could walk to school, walk to the Dollar General, or...
Right, I think the biggest challenge here would be because of the wetland crossing that it would require. That would be a lot of permitting and, and that kind of thing.
No, we've had them before, Fox, Fox Hollow, and I can think of a lot more where we've just had them put up on posts.
The previous Phase 2 of Overland has a wetland crossing.
Last one we just had had a wetland crossing on it.
It's not a, you know, that, that happens to be a trail, they did get the public sidewalk in the right of way.
All right, any more questions for the developer?
I do want to interrate that we had the community meeting, made notes of concerns, and as Hunter has pointed out, the pre-construction meeting will happen, and, and a lot of those things will be discussed there as well, so...
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Melissa, appreciate that.
I thought we would make the whole night with that half in the list.
I'm sorry, I really apologize.
John Avant with 68 Ventures. If, Hunter, if you don't mind, if you'll pull the topo of that site?
It's kind of broken into a few pieces.
More particularly on Twin Beach.
That should be the one on the lower half of this...
If sidewalk's required, you'll look at about one-half of this property would have to be bridged over. It has a blue line, that's the water estates, that, also the flow of that particular area, I don't know if you, you ever seen it during flood, but it's quite wide. So, you know, the, I, I, we're a developer, we got to protect our assets and the cost, but what we would have to do is build a pretty lengthy bridge that has a stop on our west property line, and, you know, and then stop, it may, is the, and when it stops, it's not going to span the whole drainage area. So, you know, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish, I, I get the connectivity...
Eventually it'd be nice for kids to be able to walk to schools, what we're trying to accomplish. Eventually, eventually, there's going to be a sidewalk there, you know, I don't know, as much as I've been eating lately in the pandemic, maybe not in my lifetime, but, you know, in my kid's lifetime, you know, there'll be a sidewalk there since he's going to eventually pay for it.
Well, we're just, to be totally honest, we're just not prepared, we're totally not prepared to have a expense of that nature. This, this came kind of out of left field, and the logistics of building that and the expense of it is this, it's just over, it's going to be overwhelming for us, it's right now, it's overwhelming because of cost. That right there would be a tremendous expense.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, commissioners?
Make a motion, will you approve subdivision 21 dot 27?
Subject to the staff recommendations.
Subject to staff recommendations.
A motion to approve, subject to staff rec, do I have a second? All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say nay.
No.
No? Okay, we've got, oh...
Oh, and just for a comment. Go back to one of, the one that, the earlier one that we had, and, and it goes kind of back to the situation where you don't do for one, you're not willing to do for all, you don't start a precedent, you're not willing to carry on forever. Well, all right, I understand it's an expense to build a bridge for a sidewalk, and, and it is, and that's part of it, and I understand that, I don't know what the alternative is, but where, where does that, where does that stop then? When you get the next one that comes and says, well, you did this for, for whatever the name of the stuff, what is this? Long Branch subdivision, and we got one that's only 50 feet shorter, why, why can't we get by without? Anyway, that's my, that's my...
I agree.
There you go.
All right, five to two, I'm nay as well, so we got five to two.
Can I, I mean, you just like convinced me, can I change my vote? Five to three, four to three? Is that, are you allowed to do that? It's been reported, it doesn't matter.
It's the same outcome either way, but five to two.
All right. All right, next item on the agenda is the SD 2128, public hearing to request Joey and Janet Langley final plat approval for Dewberry Estates, two-lot minor subdivision.
Final plat approval for a two-lot minor sub, did I just hear myself say that?
You did. This is that, that...
This is the one that we had to be in hoopla about the private road, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
This is, yes, this is another one of those, this is the back end of what we dealt with earlier, with the fire hydrant, but instead of fire hydrant, it was a public access. So, get back here, I'm going to be real quick, this is a two-lot final plat. The issue that came up at that point in time was, this was at the back, I'll show you, the, the line in question is here. If you look at the site, or the, the plan on the left, the zoning map, you'll see this sits off of the highway and has access through an easement and splitting, adding more lights, so it hit, hit a culmination where enough lots are being created, we're starting to worry about fire access. The access need to be improved enough that a fire truck could access it safely, not get stuck. They've paved the road, Eric Cortez and myself went out, looked at this, we have Geotech's approving, it will handle a loaded fire truck, everything is meeting, we recommend approval without conditions. The plan, this is a follow-up of the final plat as we approved in preliminary plat, so there is no installation remaining, so there will neither be a performance bond or a maintenance bond required.
This has got to be a parallel universe, do you say approve without conditions?
Without conditions, this is, this is, if there's a home run, this is it.
Tell you what, they went to the map to put, to pave that thing to...
They did, they did a great job, and we really appreciate their patience, you know, and... Really do appreciate their patience with this, but I think it turned out to be best.
All right, thank you, anybody from the developer wish to speak to this item? Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item, I'll open the public hearing, and I'll close the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, and SD 2128, Dewberry Estates, I move with proof.
Second. Was that subject to staff working, never mind the... All in favor, say aye.
We're going to put a big asterisk by that one, seriously, all the time.
Everybody read, make sure we all read our, our minutes next month. Next item on the agenda is EC 21.07, NPM Investments LLC.
We'll actually go back to SD 21.3, if you don't mind. 3-0, Old Battles Village Phase 4A, final plat subdivision.
Doubled it off twice, good point, my bad, go ahead.
And since Hunter didn't use any conditions of approval, I might borrow one or two of his. This is a final plat approval, like, as I said, for Old Battles Village Phase 4A. It's a 22-lot subdivision that's located on the north side of Phases 1 and 2 of Old Battles Village PUD. It's, has, it is a PUD, therefore has a site plan that it has to be built substantial conformance to. On the screen is the aerial on the right and the zoning map. On the left, as you see, it's tucked in between two existing phases currently. On the screen is the plat depicting the layout of the lots, again, all built in conformance with the approved PUD. Just a few comments, the final plat must be recorded within 60 days after the date of final approval. Stormwater comments, the stormwater system for 4A was designed to function with the existing stormwater system of Phase 3. Staff required a full inspection of the stormwater system. The letter I provided you was a letter indicating that all, anything has been corrected, so there are no conditions of approval for that. The aerator is currently not operational, that is strictly due to the power not being connected at this time to that development. Follow-up activities required by the staff are in here, so we know what to do after the final plat approval, if it is approved, to record the O and M agreements, the performance bonds, maintenance and guarantees, and the things listed on, on the screen. Staff recommends approval of SD 21.30, Old Battles Village Phase 4A, with the following conditions. Again, you will see some items in red, item number seven, that can be eliminated. The report, again, as I said, given you was the inspection report indicating that the system is operating as designed in accordance with Fairhope subdivision regulations. The conditions are kind of a punch list that are still left. Some of the rain events we've had here recently has hindered the ability to stabilize and get the 90% growth. So, condition one is final stabilization of all disturbed areas with 90% growth verified by planning department. Removing the sediment accumulation on some of the sock pipes and the drainage inlets. Reinstall the future Drew Street that was knocked down. There's a remaining storm hole, manhole invert that needs to be grounded and smoothed, verified by Public Works Department and proof that the aerator is operational and to complete the follow-up activities for the maintenance bond and guarantee agreement that was listed inside of the report. Like I said, most of these conditions are not, nothing serious, nothing major. Just wanted to make sure that they are on the list to be verified one more time. Some of those sock pipes were left in for those storm events coming in to protect any debris getting into those storm events.
Any questions for staff at this time?
All right.
So, the two items in red are removed or added to?
Item number seven, six and seven were added after the report. Seven is no longer valid due to the report given to you and six is to memorialize the follow-up activities required after plat approval.
Okay. All right. Does anybody from the developer wish to speak to this item? Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. It has been really challenging with all of the rain. So, thank you guys for being patient and allowing us to bring the letters in sort of today and things like that. But it has been very challenging to get inspections and final stabilization and things like that done. It will definitely be taken care of.
That's a very nice development there. It really is.
It's beautiful. It really is. And this was, if you notice on the plat, Mr. Kohler, the little bump outs that were in the right of way, those are traffic calming.
Gotcha.
So, yep. Traffic calming in action.
Well, thank you. I would feel just to kind of stay up front. Well, I don't think anybody here from the public is going to. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item?
Yeah.
Oh, come ahead. Feel to state your name and your address, please.
How are y'all doing? Great. Thanks for hearing me out. My name's Tony Barnett. I live at 115 Garrison Boulevard. So, that's on the main, one of the main entrance. Actually, it's probably the main entrance and then there's another entrance off Old Battles, but it's not really the main thoroughfare or the artery. So, I guess from what I, the information that I have heard is that there, these are going to be lower income homes? Or that, what is the value on these homes going to be?
Sir, let me, just one minute. Any questions you have, I'll write down and I'll get the developer back up.
It's my first.
But that's fine. And by the way, this subdivision has been approved and built. So, this is the final plat approval where our job now isn't to approve the subdivision. It's to make sure that they have done what they said they've done. In other words, all the sidewalks are there, all the speed bumps are there, the ingress and egress.
My apologies. I just wanted, so from what I was told that what was initially proposed was changed. So, that's why I was really coming to get more clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can elaborate there.
Yes, sir.
There was, staff did review and I believe there was even a community meeting for Phase 6 of this to create smaller lots within Phase 6 as approved within the PUD. That's not this, this is, that would be, if we see that we do not have that application?
Perfect.
I'm good.
You might have got that from the mainstream media.
Yeah, this is, this is already there.
You know, it's one of those things where you want to be involved in your community, like you said. You want to have a voice. You want to come in here. And it's not that I want to stifle progress. I just want to make sure that the neighborhood that I have put my hardworking money into is going to be the neighborhood that they promised. So, I apologize. I'm not trying to waste anyone's.
No, that's a very good question. This is 4A, so it's already actually there. So, keep looking out for those yellow city signs and keep in touch because eventually the next phases will come before us. And so, the way that it works, this is in general been, been a, you know, kind of a big concept through, you know, a number of phases have been approved and a kind of a concept.
Sure.
But each phase then comes back as a subdivision. And when the subdivision comes, you have, you know, SD 2130, which is what this is.
Right.
And you have the preliminary plat approval and then you have the final plat. The preliminary plat is the one that you would be interested in for the next phases because that's when they'll come in and show what they're doing. And then after that, once they get that approval, if they get that approval, then they'll build all of the improvements. And at that point, they'll come back for the final plat approval. So, when you heard Mike mention, you know, some exceptions, those are items that just because of the rain and things weren't able to be able to be done by the time we vote, but it's stuff that's well within the staff's capability to say, oh, yeah, we'll, you know, make sure that, you know, those couple of items are there before we start permitting houses to be built.
How soon in advance would they do something like that?
Well, the good news for you is you can, you can follow what we do every month. We meet first Monday of every month. About a week or week and a half prior to our meeting, they will publish our agenda on the city's website. So, you can pick that up every month, find out what we're going to be doing and you'll see your, your own. You'll see the one that you're interested in if and when it does come up.
Thanks.
And if that would happen, we would probably see that, I would assume, as a PUD amendment. So, that would actually be a zoning change before we got to a preliminary. So, you would see signs on, on the properties. I think be, yeah, that would be the next step.
So, then they would come in front of us and then city council. So, they'd actually be two shots at it.
If that happens, I don't know if that's going to happen or not.
And you can also leave, you know, call, you know, we're kind of in between secretaries right now. But as we, you know, do get one, you could give your email because we have an email list that we send out that involves a lot of Owners Association presidents and people like that, that we just send out our agenda to, you know, a week prior.
Perfect. Thank y'all for hearing me out.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Anybody else from the public wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD 21.30, Old Battle Village Phase 4A. I move with approved, subject to staff recommendations, eliminating number seven.
All right.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed say nay. All right. Motion passed unanimously. Now, am I appropriate? ZC 2107, rezoning from RA to B4.
Yes, sir.
West side of 181. All right. And I did drop by this one today.
Good afternoon. So, this is.
Wait a minute. Who's taking notes now? This is kind of scary.
I got it.
That's even scarier now. I don't feel any sense of comfort at all now. Hey, Mike, can you look here up ahead? At least act like you're taking notes.
I haven't recorded as well. I don't know. That's not exactly the prettiest secretary I've ever seen.
This is ZC 2107, zoning change from RA to B4. This is the request of Fairhope Single Tax MPM Investments LLC. They're requesting to rezone the property from RA to B4. This property is approximately 2.22 acres and is located on the west side of Highway 181, approximately 200 feet north of Windmill Road. Here you will see the zoning map as well as the aerial. And this is the drawing of the site showing frontage on Windmill Road and Highway 181. The applicant states that commercial development along Highway 181, of course, is inevitable. The aerial is wooded and does not appear to have attracted any entrance in its current zoning classification. Due to its location outside of the village core as specified in the comprehensive plan, the applicant believes that the request for B4 zoning is more appropriate and is less intensive. B4 zoning district is defined as it is intended to provide an opportunity for business establishments of a professional nature and is restricted to offices and businesses which provide specific corporate functions or professional services to be, to the general public. And there you see the map and the subject area is right below the closest village core, which is at Fairhope Avenue. So, the drawing here just illustrates an L-shaped lot, again, with two frontages, one on Windmill and one on Highway 181. And I just have kind of illustrated the surrounding zoning districts. You have PUD, R1 to the north, R2 across Greeno Road. You have B4 to the south and then PUD across Windmill Road to the south. Again, since 2001, the comprehensive plan has supported the village concept. I spoke previously about the village cores and the closest one being on that Fairhope Avenue intersection. The zoning ordinance states the following about RA. This district may be used for a holding zone for future development. Staff finds that because the subject property does not fall within the village center as defined by the comprehensive plan, it is more appropriate to request a lesser intensive zoning and we are in agreement with the applicant's claim that B4 would be more appropriate. Minimum building setbacks are illustrated on the survey that was submitted. However, according to the applicant, they are the RA setbacks. The applicant intends to revise the setbacks once the rezoning application is approved. Due to the unique shape of the subject property, staff has proposed the following. A 60-foot minimum building setback along Highway 181. A 20-foot minimum building setback along Windmill Road. 20-foot minimum building setback along the northern and western property lines. And then a 20, I'm sorry, a 10-foot minimum building setback along the interior property lines as shown on the drawing. That's our criteria for review. And staff recommends approval of case ZC 21.07, subject to the following conditions. The submission of an administrative replat should record the setbacks as proposed by staff.
Thank you, Sam. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
Thank you much. Please grab the pen away from Hunter ASAP. Would anybody on behalf of the developer wish to speak to this? Yes, sir.
I'm Larry Henderson. I have property to live in that's subdivision adjacent to this property. Our concern.
Oh, wait. It's not the public hearing yet, sir. I'm sorry.
Sir.
It's not the public hearing yet. I need to let the developer speak first and then I'll open the public hearing in just one second. You stay up front if you want. It'll just take a moment. Yes, sir.
All right. Before I get started on the, this one, it was a development that you were remembering with the gopher tortoise. I think it was one of my projects though. And so, the reason they're worried about the gopher tortoise is because eastern indigo snake lives in the gopher tortoise's holes. They'll cohabitate. And so, that's, that's what you're remembering. But I believe now the eastern indigo has been, I forget the term they use, but it's no longer in Alabama, according to the Department of Natural Resources.
Extricated, I think is the word.
That's it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Not delisted, but gone?
Out of Alabama.
It's not in Alabama any longer.
Well, they say that, I think.
Yeah, they just haven't had any recent.
Yeah. It's not in Baldwin County and the original recommendations were that part of Alabama, Washington County, Mobile County were going to be included in the, in the area, but most of it's in Mississippi. But it's not over here.
So, that was it. And I guess while I'm giving.
Yeah, thank you.
As Rebecca on the previous, the, you hear about the sidewalks to nowhere, but on that one, previous one, that had nothing to do with the boardwalk to nowhere. I'm a runner, so I run a lot of times, a lot of times it's dark. If y'all know where Palladium is, there's a boardwalk going through wetlands that dies in wetlands. And I was running one night and it was still, our morning, and it was still dark. And so, I would agree with your votes. So, don't feel bad that you didn't get to change it because I about had a broken leg. Because that, that boardwalk would have been floating in the air.
That's an isolated sidewalk in there.
Yeah. There would have been no way for them to tie it back based on the screenshot that I saw. So, on this one, you know, there's not too much of a presentation that needs to be given. I did want to note that also across from the B4 zoning, on the other side of 181, is a business use. There's offices located there and then on the east side of 181, the southeast corner is where Billy's Bacon is. So, that whole corner right there and the PUD to the south is also professional offices. So, that whole area is, you know, becoming an office place. And so, that's why we went for the B4 on this rezoning. We thought it was appropriate with the surrounding uses. And that's all I have.
I think it works well. The way the little water retention is right there on Windmill Road between the houses and the little spur that you have works pretty nicely, I think.
Yeah. And I really don't think there's enough buildable area there on that spur anyway. So, if anything, it'll be an access.
One way in, one way out. You get a lot more parking that way.
Yeah. Thank you. If y'all have any other questions.
If you need me to design it for you when you get to that point, just, I've got my.
You moonlight?
I'd be glad to.
Like everybody else, we're hiring.
I'd be glad to. You'll have me for a day. I'll be fired.
He's getting his government check now for COVID, so he's not, he's not looking for a job.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Sir, if you'd like to speak, please just state your name and your address, please, sir.
This piece of property is backs up to our subdivision.
Could you state your name and your address?
Larry Henderson.
Larry Henderson. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Resident of the area and also the president of Property Owners Association. So, I'm speaking for more than one.
Perfect.
Our concern is not the fact that it's going commercial. I think it, it will. If I owned it, that's what I'd be trying to do with it. But our concern is this part right here. And you can't, where the B4 is, is that part of our property backs up right there as a retention part. Of course, this going in there could, and more than likely will increase our liability. And we're concerned about whether we're going to get a buffer there. Now, we did get a notice on this piece of property. We did not get a notice or, let me say, I don't recall getting a notice on the piece of property B4, which was recently changed and is under construction or has construction going on that lot now as a commercial piece of property. And so, we've got that 30-foot buffer that goes out to Old Mill Road, Windmill Road. And we don't have any buffer. We'd like to express our concern in the buffer there and along the property lines all the way up.
Hunter, let me ask staff at this, what is the buffer required? There's a buffer that's required between commercial and residential in our ordinance for B4. What is the buffer? I believe that's 20 feet. I'd have to confirm with that. But since we're re, recording the replat for the setbacks, I believe that's 20 foot on that side, correct, Samir? Or is that 10 foot? We could add that.
Is it 10 on that side?
Okay. And then that's the.
I didn't hear a word he said.
When a business development is next to residential, there is a buffer required.
Staff has recommended 20 feet from West American.
That's setbacks. So, it's shown there. So.
But that's not a buffer.
That's not a buffer. 10 foot with a fence. And I believe there's some landscape. There's a few options for what, how you can create that.
What kind of buffer would be required?
10, 10-foot fence and 10-foot. I believe there's some options for. Some landscaping. Landscape. So, there, there won't be anything built within the 20-foot, buildings built within 20-foot of that property line. And there will be a buffer with at least a fence in between the two uses.
10 foot, 10?
A fence, I believe that's 8 foot. 8 foot fence.
You don't know?
8 foot. 8 foot, 8. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you then.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. All right, anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this point. And remember that we just make a recommendation to the City Council, who will eventually make the decision on this, since this would be, in fact, a, a zoning. Commissioners?
I make a motion for ZC 2107, rezoning from RA to B4, that we make a recommendation to City Council to approve this application. And on top of that, I think B4 certainly would be logical in this particular...
All right, got a motion to recommend approval.
Staff recommendations.
Yes.
With staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to the City Council, subject to staff recommendations. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. ZC 21.09, public hearing to consider the request of the City of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department for an amendment to the central business district to allow short-term rentals.
Thank you. We're going to set another record here. One-sentence amendment we discussed last month to the CBD, to amend the CBD section to allow short-term rentals anywhere within the CBD. That language was added in a very simple sentence under the, I believe that's Article Five. Don't quote me on that, but it's CBD Section B and subsection three uses, we've added A, which reads, "Short-term rental shall be allowed within the CBD regardless of the underlying zoning district." This is, was brought up due to a couple of rezoning requests in the CBD to B2 last month that were tabled, and this was, I thought, a better solution, so this, this makes some that already are operating. B4 is really the only, only zoning district within CBD except for a couple of quirky R2s, or R1s that will allow short-term rentals. So if there's any questions, that's, that's, that's the gist of my presentation.
Yeah, and this is kind of along your lines, art of what you do for one, you do for the others. This is one where there was nothing on B4, and just traditionally some people had some, and now it's like, well, what do you do, you know? So it makes sense. Anyway... This is a recommendation to the City Council, again, being a zoning amendment.
It benefits the CBD amendment.
That's certainly... All right, any questions, concerns, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we recommend to the City Council to approve the change to the subdivision regulations for B4.
Zoning ordinance.
Zoning ordinance.
Sorry.
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, any further? And I'd just like to go on the record, say I thought our meeting went great, our lunch meeting, and I hope we'll do those every few quarters and just kind of air stuff out. It certainly is good team building, I think, if nothing else.
I agree with you. I thought it was good. I think it's something, I don't know if we need to do it every month, but at least once a quarter.
Every couple months, I think so.
I agree.
And I think Art and Lee should buy lunch every time.
Just a real fact, if we fried chicken next time, bye-bye.
Send me some business and I'll buy lunch.
Popeyes. I think it'd be neat to have one of those and invite specifically some of the engineers to maybe kind of give us some feedback and some info on, you know, what they think.
That's a great idea.
You know, Rebecca was making a couple of comments of, you know, how do they do it here, how do they do it there? Do they do it better than us? Which obviously nobody does, but every now and then we might want to...
There might be some ideas.
Might be some idea we could use. I think maybe invite some engineers and get them to kind of give us some ideas this way and that way.
I think it's a great idea.
Do I have a motion?
But you'd have to have some kind of a, I mean, you'd have to kind of give them some idea of what we'd be looking for, I mean, instead of just inviting lunch.
You're talking prep work now.
They come over there and just stuff their faces and get up and leave, I mean, you know.
No, I think we just, yeah, I think we give them some, you know, a little sheet, kind of, how do you think we do on dates, criteria, reviews? You know, what are your biggest gripes about our comprehensive plan, about our subdivision regs, you know, some things like that.
Well, and asking them, instead of just like what's wrong, but just, have you seen this done better somewhere else?
Yeah.
Have you seen a better example?
What about the comprehensive plan? Is there a plan yet? Not a plan, but I mean, is there a game plan?
There, there were two, two pieces to that puzzle. The, the GIS portion has completely been approved. We are getting ready to kick that off. The comp plan, I believe, was approved at council, we're waiting...
Waiting.
For ADCNR or, you know, somewhere in the...
That takes a while.
In the...
Okay, how do you pick, who, who will draft, who will be responsible for drafting the comprehensive plan?
A, a group was selected, the selection committee for all of the restore projects were, was compiled, and that group reviewed everyone that bid on, or sent in an RFQ for that project. I don't think we're at the point where that recommendation is public. I don't know that, so I'd like to...
Do you, you get, Restore Act approves, approves the expenditure for the development of new comprehensive plan, and the money associated with it, correct? Jimmy?
I missed the second part of that.
Did, did Restore Act approve the...
The funding for...
The funding for a new comprehensive plan? Is it the City Council's responsibility to send out requests for proposals?
They've already done that.
That was, that's been done, and actually that was a committee on this one.
It was a committee that included staff and some council.
How many responses did you get?
Well, we actually had to, it would be done, we actually had to do it again for whether it was a process change or not getting anyone in, I can't remember the details, but we wound up with, I believe, five that met the criteria.
Five?
Yes, sir. Five groups.
Were there any local?
We had good groups.
Any local?
Yes, sir.
Art of the past, the Planning and Zoning Commission has chosen the engineers to do the comprehensive plans the last two goes.
Really?
This was, this was a unique one.
The one that I'm thinking about for the, for the village centers and all that, the one I got from Arkansas or something like that.
Missouri.
Missouri.
What triggered the change? Was it because it was Restore Act that...
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because this is state guidelines and fed guidelines administered by ADCNR, there is a process for every Restore Act, so...
I get it.
You know, when it's local, state, and federal, you get all the red tape.
Yeah.
So we, and, and the selection committee for all restore projects was the same, so that, that was kind of a quirkiness with this one, the way we, we were funded for the selection committee.
But Restore is only involved so far as the funding.
Once we get the green light on this...
Approved, they approved the projects, and, and then I think once, well, but yeah, they approved the funding of it through what we submitted to, hey, we want to do this. They say yes, and okay, we approve that funding amount, and then we get to pick the...
And who, who with the city is going to be responsible for picking the group to do the comprehensive plan?
That, we've already went through the reviews on every one. That's the selection committee.
Selection committee already did it.
And that has, that recommendation has been made, and what is some of the, part of that bureaucracy, right now ADCNR is checking in to make sure we pick some, you know, that, that whole process was met, and we hope to hear, hear back very soon, that, that everything is good, and we got the green light, and we actually will be getting started. I'll, I'll look forward to when I can, you know, let all that know and...
In other words, you got, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow here, but you got five, you got five proposals, and you've already selected the one.
Well, actually, I don't. The, you know, we, we do independent reviews. It's, there's, there's a lot of guidelines on how you do restore projects and your selection committee works. So there's actually a blind review. We have a score sheet, there's scores calculated and tallied, and then those...
So you don't even know?
Um, not, not, it, it all gets compiled, and then we have other folks that are kind of doing those things, you know, so...
Okay.
We'll...
I'm asking because I'm, I'm involved with Restore from, from Natural Resources Conservation Service, and it's a flipping nightmare.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. But, you know, we're, we're, we're part of the bureaucracy, so...
Let's go ahead and close the meeting and talk about it.
Let's do that.
That's fine.
I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting.
I'll say aye.
Aye.
7:42.
So...